Looks like we have most people connected, so Chair Runner, I'll turn it over to you. But before I do, let me, I'm gonna put a message in the chat that'll kinda talk about the order of the way the, each case is gonna go and when a public comment will be, will be allowed. So if we can kinda follow that the best we can and take turns, it should turn out to be a pretty smooth meeting. Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and I want to welcome everyone. This is the 15th, 2020 meeting, special meeting of the City County Planning Commission, and I'm going to ask Ms. Martin to please call the row.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Ballance? Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
He may be on mute.
We might loosen if there's an issue.
Commissioner Valtali?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren? Commissioner Warren, I believe you're on mute.
Sorry. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, Jessica.
Okay. Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. Commissioners, you've all had a chance to review the summary minutes of the October 1st meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? No corrections, I would ask for a motion.
Submissed.
Thank you. In a second, please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
abstained.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valtali?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Runner, please order the record to include all statutory and regulatory provisions, the commission's entire file for each application, and the qualifications for each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
So ordered. And do you all swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. And we have Ms. Mooney with us tonight to give a financial
Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to give you guys a couple of quick updates about our financial report. I won't go into a lot of detail about it, but just wanted to point out on page one, our total income, we are right on track where we want to be. We're at 27%. So we're actually a little bit over where we want to be on income so far. And then our total expenditures, that you'll notice on page two, we're at 23.1%, which means we haven't spent quite as much as we would have anticipated. So everything's looking good on revenues, everything's looking great on expenses. I got the, our quarterly newsletter sent out to all of the, the city and the county, and then Ms. Jessica sent it to email, I think to, I think all of you, and then several others. But anyway, that's all the detail I'll go into, but I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody might have at this time.
Mika, I have a question about the postage. Are we not mailing packets more to the small cities?
Um, Jessica, you probably would know that question better than I would.
When I started back six years ago, I've never mailed packets to small cities. I was never told to get back when I started six years ago.
Any other questions from the speaking? No other questions? Well, thank you so much. Appreciate the report.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Subdivision and site development plans. Any questions on those in the packet? No questions. Letters of credit and performance bonds. We have one item tonight. Commissioners, you have a question? None, then I would ask for a motion.
Move.
Thank you. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Valtali?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. We do not have any unfinished business or new business, so we'll go ahead now and enter into the public hearing. The first item tonight is docket number 202048 Z County. Rich Pond Grove LLC, Kara Carter, Wesley and Janice Walker, and Kelly McCoy have filed an application to rezone the tract in containing approximately 1.9237 acres located at 240 Rich Pond Road from agriculture to general business with a general development plan. And also concerning that same property, the applicants have filed on docket number 2020V13 a variance for that property, and we will have our staff report.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on August 25th for the property you see outlined there in yellow. That property is zoned agriculture. Its current use is single-family residential. As you can see in the Rich Pond area there, we've got, of course, South Warren Middle and High School across the street here, across Rich Pond Road. Then there are some agricultural uses, single-family, public-institutional, public, and then commercial, and a couple multifamily as well, along with some vacant tracts. Future land use map is rural village. And I will go ahead and put up the concept that we can reference as we go along. I'm sorry, I don't know why it's zoomed in, but I'll try to get it where you all can see it easier. The applicants this evening would like to rezone from agriculture to general business in order to develop the property with a dental office. As part of this application, the applicants are also requesting a variance of 10 feet from the, from the required side yard setback of 40 feet when adjacent to a single-family residential zoning district or use. So you can see here where they have delineated calls out here where that distance is, requesting that variance of 10 feet from the 40-foot setback to allow that to be 30 feet from a residential district structure or use. On the first page of your staff report, you'll see there the compatibility with comprehensive plan, that the property is designated as rural village, as we just saw. The proposed general business zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in that category, and the proposal may be appropriate if this body determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. Moving down to the compatibility with the surrounding development, I'll just note that staff has called out there are mature trees located in the central portion of the property. There are also known sinkholes in the vicinity, and the residence located on the property was built in 1896. Going on to page two of your staff report, just noted under the site characteristics review, the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, that setbacks will adhere to the general business standards set forth in the zoning ordinance, with the exception of the side yard setback adjacent to single-family that they have requested the variance for. To address the home I just mentioned, built in 1896 under cultural and historical features, the property is not listed on the National Register of Historic Places, nor is it a locally designated historic property. The applicants agreed to afford opportunity to habitat for humanity restore and/or other similar nonprofit organizations to inspect the residence and remove any items which might be reused prior to demolition of the existing home. Moving on to the site design and compatibility review, surrounding density, existing and permitted densities for subdivisions in the surrounding area range from .51 dwelling units per acre to 6.69 dwelling units per acre. Architectural features in the area, structures range from one to two stories in height. There's a mixture of agricultural, residential, public, and commercial structures in the area. Building materials, the majority of the structures along Rich Pond Road are comprised of brick. Other structures in the vicinity are a mixture of brick, wood, metal, and block. Building orientation, the existing structure faces Rich Pond Road. The applicants agreed in their development plan conditions that new buildings on the property will also have a front facade oriented toward Rich Pond Road. Bicycle and pedestrian or trans facilities, the applicants did address a greenway trail and development plan conditions. And I will go ahead and read the submitted development plan conditions they, they submitted. Number one, all new utilities will be located underground. Number two, the following usage shall be prohibited on the property: bingo parlor, pawn shop, tattoo parlor, adult entertainment, or any sale, rental, or display of pornography or adult books, fueling station or fuel sales, vehicle sales or repair, bar or lounge, commercial parking, and telecommunications tower. Number three, hours of operation for any non-residential use on the property shall be between the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Number four, the property will be developed with a maximum of one entrance on the Kentucky Highway 242, Rich Pond Road. The proposed entrance will be coordinated with the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and with the Warren County Public Works Department. No direct access to Cal Avenue will be permitted. The owner agrees to, number five, the owner agrees to set aside space for the development and construction of the greenways trails. Number six, no building located on the property shall exceed two stories in height. Number seven, the exterior of all buildings on the property shall be constructed of at least 50% brick, ephes, stone, masonry, or cementitious material. Number eight, block and vinyl will not be allowed as an external facade on any buildings except in soffits. Number nine, lighting on the property will be downlighting not to exceed 16 feet in height. High-intensity discharge shoebox luminary type or wall pack lighting. Number 10, the property shall be developed with a maximum of one monument-style sign, which shall not exceed 10 feet in height, with a total sign face area of 100 square feet on each sign face. Any wall signage shall meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. LED light signs shall not be permitted on any building lot. Number 11, any new buildings on the property will be constructed with a front facade oriented toward Rich Pond Road. Number 12, all existing trees located on the perimeter of the development, which have a caliper of eight inches or greater, and which are located within 10 feet of the property line, will be maintained during development and construction on the property. Number 13, any sinkholes detected on-site prior to or during construction will be repaired or protected with the sinkhole structure using methods approved by the Warren County Department of Public Works Stormwater Management, depending on whether they are located in the proposed drainage area. And number 14, prior to the existing residence on-site being demolished, habitat for humanity restore and/or other similar nonprofit organizations will be afforded an opportunity to inspect the residence and remove any items which may be reused. We'll go on now to the Focus 2030 category review. There were 18 items that staff evaluated, eight of which complied, two of which did not comply, and eight which are left up to your determination. LU113, this body should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. LU2, this body should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. LU252, this body should determine if the proposed infill development is compatible with the surrounding area. LU29, this body should determine if the proposed development will protect Rich Pond's existing character. Sorry, NCR24 and NCR243, this body should determine if the proposed development will preserve and enhance Rich Pond's rural village center, if the proposed development will be compatible with the area, and if it will contribute to the historic character of the community. The proposal does not comply with NCR25 or NCR253, as the applicant's plan to demolish the existing historic home. But again, just point out, development plan condition number 14, which calls out habitat restore, other similar organization, inspecting it for materials that they could use. HN13, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible infill development that will strengthen nearby neighborhoods. And the planning commission should also determine compliance with ED1, if the proposed development will help to diversify the local economy. So that's the zone change side of the request. Moving on to the variance side, you see there on page five of your staff report, the reference from the zoning ordinance that calls out that 40-foot required setback adjacent to single-family. Below that, you have the KRS 100 reference for findings necessary for granting a variance. The applicant submitted the following narrative to address those findings. I'll go ahead and read that into the record. "The applicant feels that the odd shape of the subject property and the 40-foot additional setback along the single-family uses on both the east and west sides restrict the use of a large portion of the property. The limited hours of work and non-intrusive nature of the dental and orthodontic services to be provided on-site will not cause a hazard or public nuisance to the adjoining parcels. It is with this in mind that the applicant feels that a 10-foot variance from the 40-foot setback is not an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations." I will go back to page one and look over the points to consider that we've included on the first page for your reference. "The proposal is consistent with the flume and rural village category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, with the exception of the side yard setback adjacent to a single-family residential use for which the applicants have requested a variance. The planning commission should consider if the requested variance arises from special circumstances which do not generally apply to land in the general vicinity, if the strict application of the provisions of the regulations would deprive the property owner of the reasonable use of the land, and determine the impact of the proposed variance on the adjacent single-family property. The planning commission should further determine if the argument provided by the applicant addresses the findings required to grant a variance. The proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And finally, compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission." That is all I have for the staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicants are with us this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Ramsey. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Monica, I have two questions. In the design review, if it's gonna be a dental office, why are they wanting to open at 6:00 a.m. instead of 8:00 a.m. when they're gonna be that close to a residential? Did the staff talk to them about the hours of operation?
It was discussed, but as far as the reasoning for settling on that particular hour, I, I don't know. That might be a better question for the applicant.
I think, I think they're off, I think some of those offices open at 7:00, so I would imagine they want it before 7:00, just to get in there, get the office open and ready for the patients, or emergency services. Yeah.
Right.
I, I just left the dentist yesterday, and my particular dentist indicated, nothing related to this, but just on a discussion with him. They come in early in order to have enough time to prepare for, and he said he indicated a lot of the offices are now opening at 6:30 and 7:00 o'clock, so.
And they're usually not open on Friday, so we're only talking about four days a
Monica, I have a question on the variance, if I could, please.
Yes, sir.
I see the, the 10-foot variance that they're requesting, and it, it looks like the sidewalk would not count against that variance, if my memory serves. So maybe they're just asking for a generous variance here, but it doesn't appear that they would even use the full 10 feet, if I'm looking at this correctly. Is, is this, is this really, there's a fine line on an arc that appears to intrude into the building. And that, if just, just looking at it without scaling it, that only appears to be three or four feet. So am I looking at that right?
Commissioner Graham, are you referring, is it a couple of questions you have? Are you referring to like this space right here, as well as where they have called out the variance?
I am. For some reason, your cursor isn't showing, though.
Oh, okay. Um, well.
But I am.
I may jump in really quick. Commissioner Graham, I believe you're correct. If you zoom in really close on the exhibit, which it's hard to tell on the PowerPoint, I think the distances called out are between 34.95 feet and 36.13 feet. So the applicant may want to speak to the difference between that and the setback that's requested.
And I'm okay with that. I just, I thought it might be worth, worth mentioning that even though they're requesting a 10-foot variance, it does not appear that they would use that full 10 feet. They're, they're probably requesting a 10-foot variance just to give themselves
Do we have any other questions for Ms. Ramsey, commissioners? Do we have anything that the applicant would like to add? Anything from the applicant?
Ms. Runner, I'm here with the applicant and the owners, and they're all here. We're trying to stay away from each other.
Okay, yes, sir. Commissioners, do you all have any questions for the applicant?
Chair Runner, I do have a question for the applicant, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
In the general development plan conditions, number seven indicates a 50% brick, ephes, stone masonry, or other cementitious material. And number, I'm sorry, that's number seven. And number eight indicates that block and vinyl would not be allowed as, as an external facade. So I think my question is, the math doesn't seem to add up there. If, if we, if we're not going to have vinyl in the soffits, or the gables, I should say, then it would seem that we could easily go above the 50% that's indicated. Am I, is there something I may not be understanding here?
Well, if the applicant, to answer that question, we'll, we'll see who would like to answer that, and I'll swear to the man that they can answer that question. Yes, if you'd state your name and address, sir.
Barry McIntosh, 528 Foxmore Drive, Bowling Green, Kentucky, 42103.
And you swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Yes, sir. I believe you, did you hear the question?
Would you repeat it, please?
Mr. McIntosh, the development plan condition number seven indicates a, at least a 50% brick, ephes, stone, or other masonry, I'm sorry, stone masonry, or cementitious material. And number eight indicates that there will be no block or vinyl allowed as an external facade. And an external facade would, in my view, also include gables. So it would appear that if, if we're not going to have gable, and I'm sorry, if we're not going to have vinyl in those areas, and we're also not going to have block in those areas, it would appear that we could increase that 50% minimum without intruding on, on your plans at all. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, the building hasn't been completely designed at this time, but in the new, how people are building today, there's a lot of hardy board involved and things like that. Until we get that facade exactly like we want it, you know, the chances are, it's probably gonna be more brick than anything. But we were using 50%.
Now, hardy board would also be considered a cementitious material. So that would, you would still be, you would still be free to use as much of that as you'd like.
Right.
So, so Barry, if, if there's gonna be no block or vinyl, then I don't really see the reason to put anything about percentage in number seven. I mean, if there's gonna be no, no vinyl, I mean, you're gonna be 90, 95% either hardy board or brick.
Thank you, Christian. I should have stated that a bit more clearly, yeah. And it doesn't look like it's going to make them change their plans at all.
So really.
That should be fine. That would be fine.
What you're asking is to, really, is just to eliminate it and say it will be constructed of brick, ephes, stone, and, and, and just, and the eight's fine, but let's just take the 50% out.
That's fine.
Because, because eight really says, eight really comes back and says it's gonna, there's gonna be none, so it's gonna be 100%.
Yeah, exactly right.
So, so we will delete from development condition number seven, this phrase, at least 50% brick, I'm sorry, at least 50%. We will delete.
Yeah, you're gonna strike, in my opinion, you're gonna strike of at least 50% to strike it out.
Barry, is that agreeable on behalf of you and the owners?
Yes.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for the applicant?
Yes, I have a question on number two of the development plan conditions. Is there any reason why we're leaving out alcohol and beer sales? Is there any kind of, can we add those two for in the future, that that won't be allowed on that property, since it's so close to the school?
I think it added on there, didn't it?
That's fine.
No, I, I didn't see it on here.
No, it just says bar and lounge.
So can we add alcohol sales and beer sales?
Barry, is that okay? Barry, is that okay to add?
Yes, that's fine.
So Hamp, if you'll add that into number two, please.
Jessica will do that, if, if that's, if that's the agreement of Mr. McIntosh and the owners and developers.
Okay. Yes, that's, we're in agreement with that.
Any other questions for the applicant? Do we have anyone online that is in opposition of this request that would like to ask a question or make a statement?
I see no hands raised or nothing in the chat, but if anyone wishes to speak on this item, please unmute yourself and do so at this time.
Okay. Doesn't seem like we have any opposition. You have a question?
Yes, I have a question.
Yes, your name and address, please.
Linda Holthouse. I live out on Mormon Lane at 640. My kids go, my grandkids go to that school. So I'm wondering.
You swear to tell the truth.
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. My grandkids live out that way and go to that school, and I'm just wondering how that school time and everything, if they figured in the school buses, is that gonna interfere with traffic for the school?
Do we have anyone from staff or the applicant that can answer that question on concerning the school?
No, there shouldn't, there shouldn't be an issue with the impeding the school traffic or, or the school traffic, impeding the traffic coming into the dentist office.
Thank you. Any other questions? Nothing else? Then I will ask for a motion, please. We need to.
Make the motion to approve the pro-zoning map amendment together with, in addition upon the general development plan docket number 202040.
the general development plan docket number twenty-two, twenty-twenty, forty-eight Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus Twenty-Thirty Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further requests this motion includes summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses' public hearing.
Thank you, sir, we need a second.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Warren.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner. Yes, ma'am. The motion carried and now we need to act on the variance request.
I make a motion to approve the request for variance at two forty Rich Pond Road, docket number twenty-twenty-V, as in Victory thirteen, a variance of ten feet from the requested side yard setback, a forty-foot setback when adjacent to a single-family residential zoning district or use. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that the granting of this variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety or welfare, will not affect, alter the essential character of the general vicinity, and will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations.
Thank you, ma'am, we need a second.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Commissioner Day.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Stark.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Runner. Ma'am, the motion carried for both the variance request and the zoning application, so our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you. Next item, docket number twenty-twenty, forty-nine Z County, Kenway Contracting and J. Allen Builders Incorporated have filed an application to resell tracts of land containing approximately ninety-two point two acres located at zero and seven-ten Mormon Lane and zero North Ridge Drive from agriculture, RE residential estate, heavy industrial, and RS-one-B single-family residential with a general development plan to RS-one-D, which is single-family residential with a general development plan. And we'll hear our staff report from Ms. Hart.
Thank you, Chair Runner. We had a pre-application conference on June the nineteenth. Let me see if I can fix the screen here. This one, thanks, Jessica. There we go. For the property you just referenced, roughly ninety-two acres, and the proposal includes the development of up to three hundred and thirty single-family residential lots.
Wow.
The current zoning of the property you mentioned is split ag, RE, RS-one-B, and HI. And the current use of the property is a mix of agricultural and vacant. The future land use designation for the property is moderate-density residential. This category encourages areas developed for higher-density, single-family detached development as well as semi-detached, multifamily development, including duplexes, townhouses, apartment buildings, condominiums, and mobile home parks. Densities in this land use category should range between three and a half and thirteen dwelling units per acre. And the density for the proposed development is three point five eight dwelling units per acre and complies with this future land use designation. Jumping on to the layout, lot sizes, and setbacks, this is the proposed layout, preliminary layout for the proposed subdivision. And under transportation infrastructure, we've noted that the properties have frontage on Mormon Lane, a county-maintained urban local roadway with fifty feet of right-of-way and twenty-one feet of pavement width, and also on North Ridge Drive, which is a county-maintained urban local roadway with fifty feet of right-of-way and twenty-one feet of pavement width. There are also two access points proposed on North Ridge Drive, as you can see on this exhibit, two on, sorry, I did not mean to zoom in. Two on North Ridge Drive and then one on Mormon Lane here. And then there, the preliminary plan also accounts for another future access to Mormon Lane in this general location. But before that could happen, additional property would have to be acquired by the developer before this connection could occur. There are also sub streets provided to properties that are ten acres or greater as required by our subdivision regulations. So there's three, four additional sub streets provided on this concept plan. Under wastewater adequacy, this development is located within two thousand feet of sewer and will connect if the proposal is approved. And also, if approved, the properties would be provided with adequate water to meet the minimum fire protection requirements. Moving down to the site design and compatibility review section, under surrounding density, existing and approved densities for subdivisions in the vicinity range from zero point one-seven to twenty-one point five eight dwelling units per acre. Again, the proposed density for this development is three point five eight dwelling units per acre. Under surrounding architectural features, the existing residences that are adjacent to the proposed development are mostly one-story. There are a couple of taller agricultural buildings also located in the vicinity. The current binding elements for the existing North Ridge and Woodstone Springs subdivisions, which if I jump back to the density map for reference, the North Ridge is the green shaded subdivision. Woodstone Springs is the pink subdivision just to the bottom here. And for those subdivisions, the minimum home size required is eleven hundred square feet. Under building materials review, the majority of the existing residences that are adjacent to the development are vinyl with split-face block foundations. One of the residences is brick with a brick foundation. Under pedestrian, bicycle, or transit facilities, sidewalks will be required to be provided on at least one side of the street per the subdivision regulations. The applicants have also agreed to prohibit the parking of any vehicle so as to block pedestrian access to sidewalks within the development. And this restriction would be enforceable by the homeowners association. Moving on to the development plan conditions, the applicant supplied fifteen conditions to help address compliance with the Focus Twenty-Thirty Comprehensive Plan. The first, the property will be developed with a maximum of three hundred and thirty residential building lots, each with a minimum of seven thousand square feet in lot area. Two, each residence will have a minimum of twelve hundred square feet of heated living space exclusive of porches or garages. Three, each residence will have a minimum of a one-car garage with an eighteen-foot wide concrete drive. Four, no building will exceed two stories in height. Five, exteriors of all structures will consist of vinyl, brick, stone, drive it, cement-based siding, man-made stone, or other modern masonry materials. All accessory or detached structures will be of the same or complementary material as the primary structure. Plain-faced block will be prohibited as an external facade. I'm going to skip over number six, I already referenced that earlier in the report. Number seven, all new utility lines will be located underground. Eight, uniform metal or fiberglass composite streetlights will be installed throughout the property by the developer. Nine, the property will be developed with a community mailbox system. Ten, existing trees located on the perimeter of the development, which have a caliper of eight inches or greater and which are located within ten feet of the property line, will be maintained during development and construction on the property. Eleven, development plan conditions two, three, four, five, and six shall remain development plan conditions only until a subdivision plot is recorded for the property, after which they shall no longer be development plan conditions but will become flat restrictions. Twelve, all lots shall have entrances from internal streets only. Thirteen and fourteen, I'm going to skip, I'm going to touch on those here in just a second. Fifteen, sink holes detected on the property prior to or during construction will be repaired or protected with a sinkhole structure using methods approved by the Warren County Public Works Stormwater Management, depending on whether such sinkholes are located in a proposed drainage area. Next, we have a reference to Section three-one-four of the zoning ordinance, which outlines the requirements for a traffic impact study. A traffic impact study was not required by the Warren County Public Works Department in lieu of the applicant's agreeing to the following improvements, which are listed in development plan conditions thirteen and fourteen. First, insulation of a deceleration lane is required on Mormon Lane, minimum two hundred feet in length with a ten-to-one taper. And second, the second connection to Mormon Lane shall line up with Woodstone Drive. And again, that would be in the future if there were a second connection. Next, the Focus Twenty-Thirty category review. Staff evaluated sixteen items from the Comprehensive Plan. Ten of those items were in compliance, one was out of compliance, and five items the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. So first, LU one-point-one-point-three, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. Next, the proposal may comply with LU-two and LU-two-point-one. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will protect the character of the area. LU-two-point-one-point-one encourages increased open space standards to ensure that an adequate amount of such space is usable. The RS-one-D zone requires a minimum of twenty-five percent of open space per lot. The proposal does not comply with this item as the applicants did not address any increased open space within the proposed development. Next, moving down to H-N-two-point-one and H-N-four, the planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type and if the proposed residences are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. With that, I'm going to go back to page one and go through the staff points to consider. First, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And last, compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Join in.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I have some questions. Can y'all hear me?
The commissioners first, please.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioners' questions? I apologize, I didn't state that.
Chair Runner, Tim Graham here, I do have a question regarding compatibility. Rachel, did I understand you to say that most of the homes in the surrounding subdivisions are split-face block foundations?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the commissioners for Rachel?
Rachel, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking at North Ridge subdivision up there, I've had multiple people make contact with us in Plum Springs, et cetera. And we have concerns about the fact that there's so many things that are not finished in that particular subdivision. Has the staff been out there and looked at all these issues that people have been raising about the subdivision not completed before they want to begin something new?
I can tell, I can start with that. The, I guess, quick and easy answer is yes, definitely. We are out there all the time. We are aware of some of the most recent complaints about the mud in the streets and then some couple of low spots in the pavement. And we are addressing those, those specific items that we got complaints on. But we do regularly inspect those subdivisions, all of them, all thirty-plus we have going on right now. And they're all seen two or three times a week at minimum. One of the pictures of the low spot was where a trench fell in where utilities are, and they will be fixing that. The mud in the streets, kind of the responsibility of Warren County Public Works and the Rose and Sediment Control, but we're working with the developers and builders and the county on trying to remedy that as well. But unfortunately, sometimes construction zones are just messy. But they have, on our part, our contract with them is for three years. So each section is, and some of those corrections don't have to be made till three years. But we have Zach Jones here as well that does some of those inspections. If anybody has any further questions.
Thank you, sir.
And Ben, I would add that you are, of course, still holding a bond on the developer until completion correct.
That is correct. We hold, we, each project is bonded and we make sure we hold that bond. And once it gets to the acceptance process, so when the developer's ready to hand that infrastructure over to, in this case, would be Warren County, then all of those corrections have to be made before we will, before the county will accept the infrastructure as well as before we'll release that bond. Because if the, if the corrections and all of the work is not done by the end of that construction contract, then we will proceed on, calling that bond if we need to. But fortunately, we typically don't have to do that.
Hey, Ben, is this a, is this an addition to North Ridge subdivision?
Might be best let the applicant answer that. I think it's anticipated this would be a separate, separate from North Ridge. But I'll let the applicant clarify that.
Any other questions for the staff before we open it up for the applicant to make a statement? Nothing else?
One more question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Has the schools been contacted? Do we have enough? If we have three hundred and thirty more families out there, are the schools of Bristow and Warren East, are they acceptable of that much growth in their schools? Has anyone contacted the school system regarding this?
The schools, the schools are never going to, they're never going to weigh in whether there's not, there's not enough room or more room needed. I mean, everything we've seen with everything that's come through here, the schools will not make a comment either way. Is that correct, Ben?
That is correct. And just, I'll just add to this. We talk regularly with Warren County School District and with Bowling Green City School District on a continual basis. The last time this came up, I don't remember what district it was in, but I contacted Chris McIntyre directly and just asked him that question. But we're working collaboratively together to make sure that both school systems can adequately, adequately plan and anticipate this growth. And they do that in their, in their planning process. And do, we watch these meetings from time to time and certainly try to keep up with all of the data and statistics as well.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. With that, we will hear from the applicant. The applicant.
Madam Chairman, I have a question.
Will let the applicant give their presentation and then we'll allow questions from, from the, those online in opposition or any question that you may have. But we'll let, we'll let the applicant give their, their presentation first.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Yes, sir. I believe you had anything that you would like to add? I feel like you're going to have a few questions here in a minute. I didn't know if you wanted to make some kind of a statement or with your.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
You sworn in, okay? You've stated your name and address.
Jody Allen, fourteen oh-two Mount Air Circle, Bowling Green.
And you swear to tell the truth, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, go ahead.
All right, thank you. I'm going to just elaborate a little bit. Rachel did a great job of giving you an overview of what we're proposing to do. But let me give everybody just a little bit of, shortly, just a little bit of history of what's going on. What I'm going to refer to as the north side of town, that's where I'm from and continue to work every day. There has not been any new development on Mormon Lane or the Mormon Lane area since we did North Ridge, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, ten or twelve years ago. So we have continued to work off the North Ridge plan and for that period of time. And that, that development continues to grow and has been widely accepted and successful. And the home buyers continue to come to that area for that type of housing. But since then, we have. But since then, we have, I'm sorry, yeah, since then, some of the development that's gone on in that area is, there's been a new exit at the, the trans park that has gone in. The trans park itself has continued to be hugely successful and continues to create hundreds of jobs there on a yearly basis. There's also been an addition to the exit 28 entrance there where the Corvette plan is, in the Corvette museum. General Motors Plan has gone through a huge expansion and continues to, to increase their employment. Warren East High School has done a tremendous job with the development of their campus, and in my humble opinion, I, I think is by far the best, the best campus in, in the Warren County system. So that's been a positive for the north side of town. The continued expansion of Ephraim White Park, which as the crow flies is less than a mile from, from North Ridge and in the, what we're proposing to put in, continues to grow and is a tremendous asset for that side of town. So there's, so the north side has continued to grow in a lot of areas. There's also been a lot of development, commercial development across from Warren East High School in the last few years. So we've can, that side of town has continued to grow, but yet we have not kept up with any of the demand for new lot creation or any kind of lot creation on that side of town to handle the amount of growth that, that we're seeing. So this is, this development is proposed to, to continue to keep up with the tremendous amount of growth that we're seeing over there. And it's not, the timeliness of our proposal here is, has been very calculated, is we finally have been able to make the connection from North Ridge Drive over to 526. So now, North Ridge, North Ridge Drive runs from Mormon Lane to 526. So we have given, are able to give the residents at North Ridge and this proposed development and everyone that lives on that, in that area, a second avenue to get to 31W. So that, that has kind of triggered our ability to bring this, to bring this property for development. So I wanted to make sure everybody was aware of kind of what was going on in that side of town. The, and when we did the original North Ridge, part of the conditions that we had to, to do to, to get that approval was, we widened Mormon Lane. We added a foot and a half on each side prior to the development of North Ridge and resurfaced that. And then in a matter of the last four or five years, Mormon Lane has been resurfaced again. So like Rachel said, it is now 21 feet wide, which is the same as North Ridge Drive, which is the same width as Highway 526. So it is the same width as a major Arkansas Kentucky road on the north side of that. In addition to that, since North Ridge has been put in at both the Mormon Lane interchange with 31W and 526, both of those have had turn lanes put in and street lights, lighted, they're now lighted intersections. So that has, that's just another item that will allow traffic multiple ways in and out of both North Ridge and this new proposed development. So the, the timing of, of what we're proposing has been really crucial to making that connection to 526 to, to put a second entrance to alleviate any traffic issues that may arise. So that's, that's kind of what's going on in, as a, as an overview. I think somebody asked a question, this is not an extension of North Ridge. The name of this new develop, proposed new development will be called Harmony, and it will have its own HOA. It does make a connection to North Ridge Drive, but it is its own separate standalone development. The, the building restrictions are exactly the same as North Ridge, and exits are a little bit bigger than what I think we had at Woodstone, which is just down the street. So it is a very similar product in size of and stature. The, the lot values in this development will be identical to the lot values in North Ridge. Yes, they are smaller, but the, the value of the lot in Harmony will be equal to, or maybe even above, the value of the lot in North Ridge. And the, the finished product of the house will be identical to the size of what they are in North Ridge, and the value will be there, will be that as well. Tried, made some notes here. So I think I have, I think I've gone through most of what I would, would like to say, and I'd be glad, be glad at this point to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We'll let the commissioners have questions first before we open it up to the audience. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Allen?
Jody, this is, this is Tim Graham. Could you speak just a little bit further on the difference? You said the value of these lots would be similar to North Ridge. Is that just a product of, of increased value in property and also the homes would be of a similar value? Is that what, do I understand you correctly?
Yes, sir. You know, we, we were very fortunate to be able to acquire the amount of property we did at North Ridge over several years, many years ago. And as we all know, the value of property today far exceeds what the value of the property was when we did North Ridge and Woodstone, for that matter of fact. And Tim, you probably know as well as anybody that what the cost of developing a lot has gone to today. So, so yes, the, the, there's a lot of contributing factors to that value, that final value. And I might add that, you know, there's a, we've had a lot of demand and questions about lot size. You know, not everybody wants to mow a lot of grass and have a lot of yard and have a lot of upkeep, which is the way really North Ridge is set up with its 75 to 85 with lots. There are a lot of people out there, especially in today's market, that just don't want that much area, want a nice house, want someplace to call their own, that aren't looking for the kind of exterior upkeep that some of the bigger lots require.
So just to summarize, Jody, from a compatibility perspective, you anticipate the value of these properties, once built, to be very similar or to exceed the value of the neighboring properties in North Ridge, correct?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioners have a question?
Jody, I have a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Sure.
The first one is, there have been concerns about some sinkholes and some things in the North Ridge subdivision that are not quite finished yet. Would you make sure that those things get done before you start a new project? Because that's a concern of a lot of people in that area. Is there a couple, it looks like people are just dumping stuff, like a big sinkhole that just has junk in it, and then, of course, the mud on the streets. And I know that the Planning Commission members are addressing that, but that's just a concern of a lot of the neighbors out here, if you don't mind.
You know, yes, ma'am, I understand that. I, I can tell you from our development of North Ridge that we, we have had very few sinkholes in the developed park, and I say developed, right of ways or the houses sit. You know, there's 50 acres of open space in, in North Ridge to where there are some sinkholes that, that are still there for drainage purposes. But anytime we've run across a sinkhole in a developed area, you know, those are repaired under the eye of, of the Planning Commission and the county engineer, and we, we correct those to their satisfaction. And again, like I think was brought up before, any unfinished section, but the only section out there that is unfinished currently is the one that's in progress, is bonded. The rest of those developments have been finished, the bonds have been released, and I'm not aware and have not seen any sinkholes on site that have any debris left in them. If we ran across one during development, we would have cleaned it out and either repaired it or left it open, depending on where it was at. But no, absolutely, if, if anything like that is, that we run across, we, we either clean it or repair it immediately.
Okay, well, that's what I've assured the people that have asked about it, because you and I have known each other a long, long time, and I know you're good for what you say. And the other question I have is, the roadway out there, I happen to know about two, one fatality and one other really bad wreck there on Mormon Lane, and of course, I know you're familiar with that road. Have they talked about straightening any of those curves or anything to help with putting additional 600, 800 cars out there?
No, again, not, not that I'm aware of, Sandy, and I think that probably the curve you're referring to is probably closer to the Woodstone entrance, I think. You know, and, and I, I don't know that at some point in the future, there's some property there that may be able to be acquired that, that could happen.
Okay.
And I would certainly love to, to help participate in that if, if everything lines up. But I believe at some point, if that connection from this proposed development to the intersection where Woodstone is now, there's probably some work that could be done in that area at some point in the future to, to help alleviate that.
Well, that was just concerns that other people have left messages about, is that is such a dangerous road out there. And I mean, I used to travel it a lot, and not so much now, but I used to, and it was quite scary at night with no lights and no, and you come upon those curves before you know it. And I was just hoping maybe you had talked with the road department about trying to get that.
You know, I, I did, I did question them at one point in time about the striping that road, and I think it's their policy in Warren County that those, that those types of roads, just even if they're wide enough, don't get striped. But I think they have added some of the reflective arrows in, in that turn. And again, any assistance that we can give them, we'd be glad, we'd be glad to do that.
I was hoping you'd say that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jody, Tim Graham, once again, if I may, we did, the staff sent out an email regarding concern from neighbors regarding sinkholes. And so I just want to clarify, when you repair a sinkhole, you're not just doing that at your discretion. You're repairing that sinkhole to the standards, excuse me, that are dictated to you by the engineers. Is that accurate?
That's accurate, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. Allen, this is Rick Starks.
Yes, sir.
What, what is the development timeframe? Something, you have never answered that.
No, sir, I have not. You know, we'll, we'll, we'll develop this, you know, similar timeline that, that we do North Ridge. We only, we only release 50 plus or minus a few lots a year in North Ridge. We've been very consistent in that manner, and this new proposed development would be very similar to that. Again, this is just a conceptual drawing, but it's probably fairly accurate. So unless there's a major deviation, we would only have 29 lots in Phase 1 of Harmony. So there would only be 29 additional lots developed and ready to sell by summer of next year. So, and I would anticipate, again, between 40 and 50 lots a year to be developed. So this is a six, eight, 10-year project and not something that would be on the market all at once. And that's been our, that's been our history at North Ridge for 10 or 12 years. That's, we've, we've been very consistent about the, the release of lots.
All right, thank you, sir.
Any other questions from the commissioners? I know we have people waiting for questions in the audience. I'll take a question, please.
Ms. Rice, why don't you go ahead? I think you were one of the ones that had a question, is that correct? Nita Rice.
Yes, thank you. I just unmuted myself. I just have.
Yes, ma'am. I apologize. This is Phil, my runner. Just state your name and address for us, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. My name is Juanita Rice, and I live at 131 North Ridge Drive.
And you swear to tell the truth.
Yes.
Thank you. Now you can go ahead and make a statement or ask your question.
Thank you very much. My question has to do with the density of this development. I have real issues with Mormon Lane because I've been here 12 years and seen how many wrecks there have been and fatal accidents, and the road simply can't handle that much more traffic. I know there are other options going out to 526 or whatever, but most everyone is going to Bowling Green in the morning, and it's just, it's a recipe for disaster. And I've contacted my magistrate, and he says simply that, you know, his hands are tied, that it's up to the zoning, if it's approved, that it will be done. And this just seems like a very high density for development in this area. And I'm also concerned because I don't see anywhere in the paperwork that I've read where there's been any kind of car study performed. Has that something that, somewhere that someone can read or? Because this, this land basically has been pasture fields with gals on it, right? And now it's going to have houses in concrete on it. So I'm not sure that it's capable of withstanding that much. And I also read that there was supposed to be restrictions about green space and sidewalks. And if you can come through the current North Ridge, like I said, I've been here a long time, the green space is just something that the HOA has to try to mow, and the properties that are owned by the developer never get mowed. And there's no sidewalk except for one busted up sidewalk on one side of North Ridge. So what I'm saying is, this all sounds good, but is it going to be done properly? And if not, who is accountable for that? Because this is where I live.
I try to speak to some of the concerns, and then I'll maybe let Mr. Allen follow up if he has anything additional to add. You mentioned a car study. That's not something that's required for a rezoning application. If this were to be approved in the future, the developer would have to work in coordination with Planning Commission staff and other sister agencies in developing the subdivision to make sure that all of our local requirements are met. But that, at this phase in the process, there would not have been any sort of engineering that, that would speak to that. As far as the sidewalks and open space, the existing North Ridge subdivision was rezoned back in the late 90s. Our subdivision regulations have changed several times since then, and there is now a requirement that sidewalks be installed on at least one side of the street. I know the majority of North Ridge now does not have sidewalks, but that is a new requirement that has been adopted into our local regulations since then. And so that's not an option. That's just something that the, that the developer has to do in, in new residential development in Warren County. And I guess, along with the open space that you had mentioned in the current North Ridge subdivision, that was, I think in my discussion with Mr. Allen, he, I guess, purposely did not include open space in this proposed development, just because of some, some difficulties with the existing open spaces in North Ridge today. So, Jody, I'll let you maybe add, add a little bit more if, if you need to.
No, sir, I'd be glad to. You know, a big portion of this farm is. No, sir, I'd be glad to. You know, a big portion of this farm is owned heavy industrial. And I don't know how many people remember, but when we first obtained it, it was Parrish's junkyard. So 20 to 30 to 40 acres of this had junk cars stacked as high as you could see for a long, long time. So what we're asking to do, proposing to do, is really much significantly less impactful than what was there before, and as a heavy industrial zone, it could ultimately be there. So, but that's been gone a long time, and, but it's not always been pasture land. And like I said, we're actually downzoning what is currently there. As far as open space, Rachel and I did have a discussion about that. And that, it all sounds great, but it creates some issues for an HOA as well. So, you know, North Ridge HOA has deed to all that open space. And I know they've had multiple discussions about trying to utilize that in other ways. And really, that's a decision that the, ultimately the HOA makes and does that. But Rachel's right, this particular development is different. We'll have sidewalks. And so it's a different product than what is at North Ridge.
Do we have someone else that would like to ask a question or make a statement?
Yes, I'd like to, got some questions, as well as like to make a statement.
Okay, if you would state your name and address, please.
Yes, John Halveston. I own a property in 1075 Mormon Lane.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I would agree with the homeowner that previously spoke about Mormon Lane being grossly inadequate for the traffic that's going to be proposed for this road. They're proposing 330 homes, 93 acres. The average household has, what, 2.5 cars per household? I've lived here for almost eight years. And we live, we are going to live right across the street for this proposed development. And I know for a fact that in the last four months, we've seen eight accidents on this road, two that have been reported. And this is just one of the issues I have. My mailbox, that's going to be right near one of the entrances, has been taken down four times for speeding, as well as cars going out of control. So the road is terribly inaccurate or inadequate. Also, so I'd like to, I'd like to know what's going on with, I think there does need to be a study, a traffic study. I think it's imperative that traffic study is done. This road is dangerous. It's flat dangerous. We have been in contact with magistrate on more times than I can count, as well as the county with the sheriff, to try to get more control, to get people to slow down. And in the seven years, it's progressively gotten worse and worse and worse. I think Mr. Allen has already mentioned something about that, or the commissioner said they're not going to do that. I also have another question. With the property across the street in the last seven years, I've been here eight years, it has just been farmland. And what happened before then is, I'm glad it was cleaned up. Well, it's a beautiful piece of property. I do know that my property is just shy of 12 acres. And we get lots of animals and deer coming through. Has, is there been an environmental impact study done for this area to, at all? With this proposed development, it's, you know, 360 homes on just 93 acres. Has there a study that the county or the state requires, or Mr. Allen?
There is not a requirement for an environmental impact study for a single-family residential development.
Why, why not?
State doesn't require it.
The state doesn't require it, or the county?
Neither.
Okay.
Neither.
The only, the only requirement, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, you know, to his first question or first statement, and I think we had a little discussion about this last meeting. We hate using the word waived, but I think the traffic study was waived. And that's not something that we take up once the highway department makes that determination.
Okay.
So, Commissioner Volker, something to be done?
Commissioner Volker, the traffic impact study was not required. This project was reviewed by the Public Works Director, and he did not feel that a traffic impact study was needed, given the existing conditions of the current roadways. And there were two conditions that he requested that are in your staff report and commitments made in Development Plan Conditions 13 and 14, for the installation of the deceleration lane and alignment of a second connection on Mormon Lane with the intersection at Woodstone Drive.
Well, I actually live on this road, and the traffic is horrendous on this road, as well as extremely dangerous. So I think, I think that'd be a, a, I believe as a homeowner on this property, that's already complained about this a more many times. I know I'm not the only one. That's just one of my issues right there. What is the, what is the median value? What's the value? What are these homes going to go for? What are they going to be sold for? Has anyone brought that up?
I don't think that's for something. I don't think that's a discussion that we have as a planning zoning board.
Well, I think it should, because my property is valued at $360,000 right across the street. If I got 360 homes right across my street that are valued at $80,000, that's going to grossly impact my value, wouldn't you say? Shouldn't that's something I should be aware of?
Well, I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I think from what he said, if these lots are going to sell somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000, I don't think they're going to be $80,000 homes across the street.
Okay, well, that's why, that's why I'm here to rebut some of this, you know, because I'm not happy with this development going across the street, as well as I believe there would be many more people that would be on this if this was done in a public hearing and not at dinnertime. So I've missed my dinner to hear this. Have some more questions for you. So in other words, you're pretty much admitted that this is going to grossly impact my property value, correct?
No, sir.
How's it going?
No, sir, no, sir. That's not what I said.
You don't know anything about your house, size of square footage, your land is 12 acres, these are building lots?
And this is not, and this, and this is why this committee and this, and this board does not get involved with property values.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Fair enough, fair enough. We'll go to the, we'll go to the county meetings at that point. Okay, I do have another question. I have some more questions. This, has the county taken into consideration the water line sewer? I do know that a lot of residents out here have very, very low water pressure. Has that been brought up to this, to consider? Is the line going to be increased?
They've got to meet the fire code standards, is what I think I read in this.
Yeah. And so this is going to meet, so with 330, 360 homes, I think, on 93 acres?
330, I think.
330.
Mr. Halveston, the county fire protection requirements will have to be adhered to, including installation of fire hydrants. And the sewer will have to be extended to this property as well.
Gotcha. Okay. Okay, I do have another question. I read in the, excuse me, I'm going through some papers here. Is what economic, physical, or social changes this is going to do to the community? Has there been any consideration on the physical and social changes that's going to do to this community? Because it is a relatively quiet community, but it is getting busier and busier and busier. Has anything been brought up to that, to address that?
Are you referencing the application, the language on the application itself?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I'm a layman when it comes to this. I'm kind of new at it. So I'm going through, and I was reading up on there. It pretty much said on the project summary, a single-family residential subdivision. But I see under the findings required for zone change, it says, and nothing's been checked, you know, on the economic or physical or social changes in the, in the area. Has this been considered, that this is going to be a relatively low-income development?
I, maybe.
Another thing, yeah, another thing we won't get into is talking about the values of the home or the income of the people. I think from a social impact, I think what he said earlier is the jobs that have come to the north side of town, that more housing is needed. So from that standpoint, I think it's, what he is trying to state is that the housing is needed. So there has been a change or an impact.
Yeah. This housing is, these houses, okay. When it comes to the development, I see only 25% green space, a one-car garage with a minimum of 18 feet wide. Do they know that the average home has 2.5 cars? Where are the rest of these cars? Were they parked in the streets? Or what, has that been addressed?
I think that was one of the reasons behind imposing a condition that
On the streets.
That the driveways would be at least 18 feet in width to accommodate
A one-car.
More than one car wide.
Yeah, it'd be two vehicles wide.
Because I know on North Ridge, from what I've seen, I'd say, there's a, I don't know the percentage, but there's not enough, just a lot of cars on the street. So, and these questions are mainly is because, you know, I'm going to have to sit across the street and look at this development fill-up. What's that? Let me read off.
All right. So my name is Rachel Halveston. I'm John's wife.
Ma'am, I apologize. If you're going to make, ask a question or make a statement, you'll need to be sworn in also.
That's fine.
If you'd state your name and address.
Rachel Halveston. I live at 1075 Mormon Lane.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So my one question is, you know, with these, as we heard earlier, you said they were, which you said you also don't want to discuss pricing, but pricing is a big deal. Let's just face it. That's what the world runs on, is pricing. So if these are going to be $30,000 to $40,000 homes, my point is, we've been robbed twice, you see? And if you're talking about putting low-income housing, whatever, whatever the case may be, you're talking about putting this housing right across the street.
Ma'am, excuse me. We're, no, no, ma'am. No, ma'am. We are not, we are not going to discuss the income and the value of the homes. This commission does not take that up.
Okay.
Either way, let's talk about putting a gate around this community, so that way it doesn't impact the other, the other houses around it. And I would have no problem with this, with this project going up. Let's put a gate around it, a fence, keep, you know, keep them from being able to come onto my property, and by all means, put this project up. Let's talk about maybe putting only two homes on one acre instead of three. And an entrance on 31 would be great, instead of right, you know, right outside my driveway, and then, you know, on the S-curve, right outside the S-curve on Mormon Lane, which has accidents on it daily. This poor lady's tree has been hit so many times that the tree's going to die. You know, putting 330 homes on a 92 acres, that's like sticking 60 homes on 13, and that would be quite a lot. Everybody would be up everybody's, you know, business. You know, I really don't see how anybody could possibly think that putting this many houses, anybody with some common sense could see how putting this many houses on this road, given the fact that there's accidents on it daily, would be a good idea. I just really don't. I think that you, it's good intentions, but the road that was paved with good intentions.
Yes, ma'am. We have noted your complaint and your concern about the traffic and the road condition. We need to move on. If you have other issues, we'll be happy to hear those. But I do want to note that we do not discuss anything that would be discriminatory of who would be living in those.
I think not discriminatory.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, if something that you're planning on doing is going to devalue something that I already have, that kind of makes ownership issues kind of an issue.
I will tell you this, both of you, please. We are a recommending body. Whatever our recommendation is, will go to fiscal court. So have another avenue to discuss this at the fiscal court hearing.
And we'll see you there, too.
And discuss that with your magistrate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone else that has any other questions?
I do.
Yes. If you would state your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, ma'am. My name is Brian Felker, and I live at 383 Fairbanks Avenue in North Ridge.
And you swear to tell the truth, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, this is a common comment and question as well. And I see an ongoing theme here. Obviously, you know, I read, read the report, and it mentions where they're not going to have a traffic impact study. And the one thing no one's mentioned here is, they're thinking, well, geez, these houses are already here. The big part is, is those trucks going in and out to that, to that development area. So I looked, I looked, I looked at the map here and everything, and I drive, I drive Mormon Road every day, because most time, like everyone else, I go into, I go into Bowling Green, I go into town. I don't go, you know, I don't go north on 526 and drive, and drive east and go by the school, and drive south again. That would be a roundabout way to get to town, would it not? Plus, you're driving by Warren East School. So the first concern, the first concern would be just pure traffic from trucks going in and out and developing that. Once again, no one's thinking about that. No one's raised that issue. And the fact, you do have a blind curve right there. So if I'm in essence going into, I'm coming from Louisville Road, or 31W, however you want to say it, and I'm going towards North Ridge, right, where one of your interests is, it's a blind curve. So if someone coming out there and turning left, they cannot see cars coming the opposite direction, opposite way. So that right there presents a real concern right there, because I wouldn't, I personally would not want to come out there and take a left and go back towards Louisville Road. So I foresee a few things happening. I foresee, as mentioned before, I think we all have one common theme here. All those who live here is our traffic and the already several fatalities. I've been quite lucky. I've never had a real issue myself, but who knows? My neighbor was forced off the road one day. So, to make a long story short, what's going to happen here, they're going to have a bunch of accidents, and then they may or may not try to widen, take away that blind curve, or they're going to start putting stop signs and, or traffic lights, right? So now it's going to take forever to get out of here, and then trucks going back up. And like you said, and there's always school buses coming in and out. So to me, I just don't understand, like you said, you know, I have a master's degree in electrical engineering, worked in engineering field, not as civil engineer. However, I just can't imagine anybody not doing a traffic study. And to me, if there was a true commitment to safety, and a true commitment by the builder, he'd have another way in there, so he could get those trucks, mentally, get building supplies in and out there, something like on the backside of that. So those of us who use that road every day would not be impacted. And, and then to add to that, usually Plum Springs, right? Most people take, they take Mormon out and go north on Louisville Road, or the, or if something, you know, is backed up, they'll take Plum Springs. Plum Springs itself is not really set well. It's narrow. It has hills, and it has blind spots. So I just see going forward, this, as the old saying goes, it's called fraught with danger. And then, you know, and then somebody say, well, geez, maybe they'll widen it eventually. Well, when you widen the road, you're not going to have access to it. And the other thing, as far as money goes, the only thing I can say about that, you know, no one likes to see their property values go down, including me. I've worked hard my entire life, and I hate to see my property value go down. That brings me, brings me a certain amount of sadness. So the one thing is, if I'm trying to sell my house going forward, and people cannot get easy access to my house, that's going to affect my property value, because I'm not going to buy a house anywhere myself where I can't get easy access to it. And the other thing, I don't think was mentioned, I believe, as I understand, the richest, was it? And the other thing I don't think was mentioned, uh, I believe as I understand, uh, the Richards, was it, uh, Richardsville, uh, uh, Richardsville, we have Richardsville, uh, fire department here, volunteer fire department that serves us. That serves the area, as I understand, of, uh, North Ridge. And I'm not for sure where else they serve. I heard, I've not heard anybody as far as, yes, you're going to put hydrants. And that's by law, but, uh, the hydrants don't do a lot of the good if you can't get, uh, a fire truck out there to put your fire out. And the other thing, as he mentioned earlier, is the water pressure. Once again, if your water, if you don't have much, we only have, we have less than 60 PSI right here, water pressure. I, I measured it myself. It's only going to go down. So, you know, it'd be nice, like you said, you know, obviously they want to build those houses here, but I'm not seeing a commitment to safety. I'm not seeing a commitment to, uh, think about the people who already live here. And if there was a true commitment, they would have a back road in here. And I hate to say this, but, you know, on your first call, on your first discussion topic, you discuss one acre and a half, two acres, went on Rich Pond. You asked all these questions, all these concerns. I don't see the same level of concern on the north side of town where the, where the working class people, well, as we all know, Rich Pond means rich people in the south side of town. And that's, and I am.
No, sir. No, sir.
Okay, that's fine. Let me finish. I'm about done.
Well, no, I'm not, I know, I'm not going to sit here and let you finish when we keep talking that we are not going to talk about the, the value of homes, what people make. And that's, and that's a statement you make that we, we, we care more about one side of town and don't care about the other. That is just not a true statement.
I apologize. Thank you. So if, if I were a commissioner and I was on there, I personally would vote absolutely not, especially if there's not another road going to the backside of this development. And, uh, that's all I have. And thank you for your time. If I offended you, I do apologize. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, do we have someone else that would like to ask a question or make a statement?
Me, please.
Yes, ma'am. If you could state your name and address.
Something different than has been discussed before, Velma.
Yes, that's true. The items that have already been mentioned, we have already noted. So if you agree with those, you can just say that you agree with those without having to go into detail to repeat, you know, just for the sake of time, that we have noted the issues that have come up so far. So your name and address, please.
I understand. My name is Courtney Weisbrock. My address is 136 North Ridge Drive.
And you swear to the truth?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
We are, my husband and I are the original owners of that house. So we have been there for 15 years. And North Ridge Drive is the main road into the subdivision. Um, I will agree with the traffic statements. It, it is pause for concern adding, uh, that many more households, um, back there. And, and it's not just Mormon Lane that, that gives me pause for concern. It's also North Ridge Drive. They fly. They do not slow down coming into, entering into North Ridge subdivision from Mormon Lane. Um, and in fact, we do not let our kids play out front. Especially, I mean, obviously when we're not out there right with them. And we do not let them go very close to the sidewalk because it's, it's just too dangerous. You know, my biggest fear is that somebody's just going to lose control and hit one of my kids if they're playing in the front yard. The land is beautiful back there. Uh, that's one of the biggest things that attracted us to that house is that it backed up to the farmland. Um, and we had nobody in our, our backyard for 15 years. So selfishly, um, I, I don't want to see that go. And we love the barn and the tree. But I do have some questions that I would like to direct. And perhaps this one should be directed to Jody Allen, if, if he's still available in here. So I was curious as to where phase one will be and where, where that will be developed. And perhaps I missed it on the, the drawing. And if I did, I apologize.
Do you want me to go ahead and answer that now? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Jody. Yes.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Uh, ph- phase one would be the northern entrance off North Ridge Drive, which would be the entrance closest, uh, on the, to 526.
Okay. So the opposite end of ours. From 136, because that, we, we're that corner lot that would be the entrance. I guess the first entrance into this proposed new subdivision.
Okay. No, ma'am, the, the first phase would be the entrance past you.
Okay. Okay. Um, does anyone know if there's still plans to develop that farmland that faces Louisville Road before you turn left onto Mormon Lane? That at one time was for sale and I think it, it fell through?
I think it's been rezoned, but I, I think it's been rezoned, but I don't think there's, uh, from what I understand, any plans out there today.
Okay. From what I understand, um, the gentleman that comes back into the land, I've tried to talk to him every once in a while. I think he said that the plans fell through once it sold and, um, he was thinking it would still be developed, but he wasn't eventually. Um, but I wasn't sure if.
There have not, there have not been any additional plans submitted through our, through our office for review. The, the last thing that we are aware of would have been the rezoning of the property, but nothing has changed since then.
Okay. Um, and then also is there any timeline with this proposed, uh, new subdivision for the light that turns left onto Mormon Lane from Louisville Road? That currently only has a yellow, uh, left-hand arrow to turn onto Mormon Lane to switch to green? Because there are so many times when I guess factories let out, um, from the, that, from the trans park and I, you know, sit through several lights just to wait to try to turn onto Mormon Lane.
We will take note of that and get with the KYTC, the transportation cabinet that would be controlling of that intersection. And we'll, we'll, uh, see what they can do about that.
Okay. And it's always flashed yellow, um, ever since it was installed. But I, I am grateful that they put the left-hand turn lane there. I, I think that's all that I have.
Thank, thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else?
I have one other statement, if you don't mind.
I'm sorry, ma'am?
I'd like to make one other brief statement, if you don't mind.
Just, yes, ma'am, a brief statement.
Yeah. With this traffic impact study, I know you said it wasn't warranted, but I think from what you've heard, only the people who live out here know how dangerous it is. And I hate to see accidents. And I hate to see, you know, when I'm heading out somewhere, I hate to see the ambulance blocking the road because someone's had an accident there. And this is just with what we currently have out here. So even though it may not be warranted from someone else's viewpoint, this is something that really needs to be addressed. And I don't know who else I need to contact, but the people who live out here know that it needs to be addressed before we put that many more people out here. That's, that kind of density on that road is just a recipe for disaster. And that's all I've got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Commissioners, do you all have any comments or questions to make before I call for a motion?
I would like to say that the concerns of the neighbors are certainly being heard tonight. And we have to go with our county road department and our county judge executive. These concerns should be addressed to them about the widening of the road and the curve. Yes, I live out here. I am very concerned, but I have to go with my, the things that they tell me. I have to go with the county road department who makes that decision, the county engineer and the, um, judge executive's office. So I would ask that these neighbors who are as concerned as I am, to please go and talk to the judge and talk to the county, um, public works department and let them know of your concerns. And they possibly will be the ones to help you. It's not something we can do, but it's certainly something that we've heard from you and that we would encourage you to talk to the public, um, staff and to talk with the judge executive and the commissioners there.
Any other comments before I ask for a motion?
Yes, this is Commissioner Starks.
Yes, sir.
I would like to also agree with, uh, Commissioner Hart from the standpoint that those are the avenues that we, that, you know, the concerned citizens need to pursue simply because the county judge and the commissioners, fiscal court, road department, both entities are the ones that can make decisions regarding modifying or implementing any kind of changes to, um, traffic events in that nature. So, um, I will call her a comment to regard and encourage those who are listening, those who committed comments to not pursue those avenues for suggested changes.
Thank you, sir. Nothing else? I'll ask for a motion, please.
I'm asking for a motion to approve a zoning matter.
I have one more question.
Can I talk?
Condition upon, to, like, on the general development plan document number 202049, Z County, based on.
Wow.
Documents presented as public hearing, the proposed zoning matter.
I think we have public that wants to speak.
Wow, you still have people that have to ask questions and you're going to, wow. They're infringing upon our rights to speak freely. This is a lawsuit waiting to happen.
I have been trying to get in.
In agreement with the document, the plan, further request that this motion include a summary of evidence.
Sounds to me like all of y'all are being paid off by Jody. Advocating for Jody.
Excuse me. Ma'am, please.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be talking to the judges.
Let's behave in a dignified manner. Uh, Mr. Moore? Are you still with us, Mr. Moore?
Yeah. Yes, I'm, I'm here. Ma'am.
We have, we have called for questions. We have heard questions. I asked if there were any other people who had questions. I thought we had gotten them all. And I said it was time for commissioners to make final comments before I called for a motion. Was that correct procedure?
We had, okay, so we had that black gentleman talk and then somebody else tried to talk and then you said it before anybody else could finish talking. Not everybody was finished. I believe I heard two other women trying to chime in besides myself.
Right.
And then he tried to muff me again and tell me to be quiet. So please let this lady talk.
Commissioner Moore?
Would you, uh, tell us your name, please?
Thank you. Go on, go on and talk. Okay, I have something to say.
Okay, now Ms. Ms. Holdhouse?
Yes.
You've already spoken once, haven't you?
No, I was ta- I had spoken earlier about the Rich Pond, but I have not spoken about my lane.
Okay, well.
My house, my house.
Ms. Holdhouse, Ms. Holdhouse.
Yes.
May I speak first and then you'll have a chance to respond? The, the chairman has asked repeatedly for comments, any other comments? There was silence. Nobody raised their hand.
Because I can't get on. Go on.
So it, it is, uh, it's, it's confusing to the process when you wait until after all of the comments have been made and then you want to make additional comments.
Waiting.
So, so please, uh, with the chair's permission, we'll, we'll open things up again and let all of the comments be made, but please don't repeat yourself and please, uh, restrict your comments to the issues before the commission.
And, and any other comments have not been mentioned?
Yes. New, new information. Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Moore. We, we have, we are just dispensed with the motion is, that was started. Just let that go and we'll start again. Is that correct?
I, I think if we let Ms. Holdhouse speak and, and anybody else who hasn't spoken with, uh, anything new.
Anything new. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Name and address, please.
Yes. Um, my address is 640 Mormon Lane. It's right in front of the curves.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
And, um, it's where all the accidents are. We have talked to the police officers, um, many, many times about the accidents and how we could have fixed it. And we get nowhere. We are also wondering, um, is, are, uh, Jody Allen planning on taking the tree lines down? That's behind my house and on the side of my house.
Will let Mr. Allen answer that question if he would, if he's still with us?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I'd be glad to. Uh, the, the only work we've done so far is just the survey work. We've not done any engineering work, uh, on that property yet. Uh, we wouldn't normally do that until after this, uh, procedure. But typically, if there's tree lines on the property lines, it's, it's in my interest as a developer to keep those there. Though, those are, uh, mature trees that enhance both the property value of the, of all the neighbors around. So, uh, the short answer to that is typically any tree line that is, uh, that is on property lines, uh, we do everything we can to maintain those because they don't, uh, they don't interfere with any of the development of, of the, of the subdivision. So, uh, any perimeter, any perimeter trees that are now, uh, it's our benefit to keep them.
Because it looks on the map like all the houses you're going to be building around my land, which is down the side and across the back. We'll have, uh, the backyards back up to the trees.
Yes, ma'am. Again, that, that is just a, uh, that's a rendering, uh, that we've done. It could possibly change, uh, five or six years down the road when we get that far in the development. But you're correct. Uh, the likelihood of, of backyards backing up to your backyard is, is more than likely that's the way that'll happen. And we would certainly, uh, be to everyone's benefit to keep the tree lines there.
Ms. Holdhouse, Mr. Allen in development plan condition number 10 has, uh, promised that all existing trees located on the perimeter of his development that have a caliper of eight inches or greater and located within 10 feet of the property line will be maintained during development and construction of the property.
Okay. The other question I have is about the cable lines. We do not have cable here. We have it down the street and down the road. But this little S does not have any cable lines. How are you going to get cable behind me?
Well, if you're talking about.
My yard. This is what I wondered.
What, what, what cable are you talking about? You talking about spectrum?
Any, any of them. We don't have.
All of the utility lines will be placed within utility easements that run along your property and run along all of the newly developed property to, to service the homes that will be in the area. So the utility lines will be located in utility easements.
Underground.
Underground. And in this, they'll be underground.
They'll be underground. Okay. And on the road thing, is there a possibility if they're not going to widen the road or change, take the curve out, to put, uh, speed bumps in this big S?
No, ma'am.
Oh. Okay. So people are going to keep hitting that tree out of my yard?
I have no idea. Ma'am, I would add this. This is, uh, Commissioner Graham. It is not within our jurisdiction to decide whether the county road department would add speed bumps to Mormon Lane.
to decide whether the county road department would add speed bumps to Mormon Lane.
But.
Just reasonably, I would suspect that.
Contact them, right?
Pardon me?
Is it up to you to contact them or?
No, ma'am. They do, all of those things are done prior to this meeting and, and, and as we stated earlier, anyone who has concerns is, is of course welcome to, to state those concerns to the county road department. They do make recommendations to us and of course in this case, they have recommended that certain criteria be met and, and the developer has agreed to that criteria.
And what is that?
For things such as speed bumps or, or anything further, that is not within the purview of this, of this commission.
Okay, my neighbor is here with me and she has questions.
Yes, ma'am, if you would state your name and address, please.
My name is Karen Forbes, I live at 662 Mormon Lane.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead and ask your question.
This concerns the, how bad the traffic is. My house has been hit, I live in the first curve off Little Road, about a half mile down, my neighbor's house has been hit. And there's a gigantic sinkhole across the road and people go down there and, down in there all the time. And there's also been a water hydrant that's been hit numerous times and it had to be moved just to show you how dangerous this road is.
Thank, thank you, ma'am.
And I can't even have a mailbox, I have to get my mail at the post office to keep from getting killed. As a matter of fact, I think one lady at the front of Mormon Lane almost got killed going to her mailbox.
There was a lady that got hit going to her mailbox.
Yes, ma'am.
What else?
That's about all I got to say, how dangerous the road is and I don't think we need any more traffic because we got enough the way it is, too much.
I have, I do have another statement. Right behind my house is where Parrish used to have his cars laid out and stuff. They cleaned that all up years ago, but we were told that there was a cave right under that area. And we were wonder, I'm wondering how that's going to affect the holding the houses if there's a football-sized cave under that area.
So, so Ms. Holdhouse, the way this process works is the planning commission tonight is deciding whether or not residences are appropriate for this area. If, if the development goes forward for the building of residences, then the developer, Mr. Allen, will propose engineering drawings that will be based on the geology and the topography and the stormwater drainage issues that affect the property. And that'll be a very detailed process which will make sure that nothing is built on this property that will impact your property or render unsafe the construction of homes on his property. And that's a process that has yet to go forward and will if, if this development is screwed.
Okay, so, how does that, I don't, well, I guess Jody Allen will have to deal with that cave.
He will have to hire engineers who will have to deal with that cave and if it's unsafe for homes, he won't build any houses over that.
Okay, that's, thank you. I'm, I'm done, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Do we have anyone else with a question?
I have one last question.
Yes, ma'am.
Has, this question's mainly for Jody.
Do we have the, the name of this person and has she been placed on?
My name is Rachel Helpus and I was sworn in earlier. Um, mainly, I, I just want to know how, has anybody taken into consideration exactly how this is going to impact the people, not just, not just the road, not just the traffic, not just the accidents, but just in general, the people that live around this? Has anybody taken into consideration, especially Jody, what it's going to do to everybody else? Because it seems to me like everybody's going to be, if there's 330 homes being put on that property, everybody's going to be up on top of each other. Nobody's going to have really any space except for being in their home. I mean, part of what makes Bowling Green beautiful is the fact that we have green spaces in most of the neighborhoods. So, my question is, you know, 330 homes is a lot, you know? I, I probably wouldn't be upset if it was only 150 homes on that property. You know, that would be a whole lot nicer to look at.
Yeah.
You know, what's it going to look like in 10 years? You know, is anybody going to be keeping this property up and making sure these people are maintaining their properties to make sure it's not turning into South Memphis? Because 330 homes on that property, that's what it's going to look like in 10 years, I can guarantee you. I mean, that, that, they're cramped, they're right up on top of each other, everybody's going to be looking in everybody's windows, you're going to have cops there all the time being called for lord knows what. I mean, you know, it, can you answer that, Jody? I mean, is that something you've taken in consideration? Is that something that you would even consider is lowering the amount of, of homes on this property? Would you consider only putting 150 and making, maybe making it a little bit nicer looking?
Ma'am, we're, we're here to decide today if this is, is a compatible development for the neighborhood, we're not, we're not speculating.
So far, everybody that's talked, so far, all the homeowners that have given you their opinion are telling you it's not, sir. So, I mean, at this point, that, that's my question, my question isn't for you, my question is for Jody. Has he taken into consideration that any of the, any of the, the problems or any of the concerns that he probably knew people were going to have concerns with putting this right there? You know, if, if this was going, if, if he was to sit there and take this proposal over to Alvin, the, the people there would be having a field day.
And we're.
This isn't, this question isn't for you, it's for Jody, so please let, let him chime in, by all means.
I, I, I want, I want to choose not to engage in, in the kind of rhetoric that you're referring to.
I would agree with.
It's not rhetoric, it's, it's a, it's an, it's an honest, simple question. People are going to be right up on top of each other in this neighborhood. Why is it so important to put 330 homes instead of only 150 so everybody has a little bit more yard? Do you not take into consideration, people are going to be walking their dogs, where are their dogs going to use the bathroom? Because I can tell you, my property is mostly wooded and my front property, my house is, is almost 900 feet off the road, I can't see, I can't even see that property, but all I can say is I've, I've dealt with people coming on my property already, I've trespassed several, okay? So, my problem is, is these people are going to be coming over onto our side of the road to walk their dogs is my problem, unless there's somewhere a green space within that area where they can walk their dogs. So, is there going to be something like that? Because what this proposal looks like is there's going to be very little yard space for these people.
Ms. Runner, I think we make a motion to, to ask for amendment.
Wow.
I agree, I agree.
You want me to read it again?
Yes, I will call for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan document number 202049.
We'll be here.
Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focused 2020 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by the compliance with the objectives and actions items presented in this staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, sir, and I ask.
Second.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Gay. When will this court thing be?
Let us take the roll call and I'll explain when the motion, we'll see whether it carries or fails and then I will, I will let you know.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkerd.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Chair Runner.
Yes, ma'am, the motion carried, so our recommendation to fiscal court will be for approval and anyone with any further questions, you can contact your magistrate, you can call the planning commission office and find out, they can give you a date when the minutes will be approved at the next meeting of when that will be handed over to fiscal court for it to come up on their docket. So, you will be able to discuss that with anyone at, of your magistrates or at fiscal court. Anything else? We'll move on to the last item, I thank you all, thank you for your questions and thank you for your help. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Our last item on tonight's agenda is document number 202050 Z County.
We'll make sure she can hear me and then go.
Seven Plus LLC has filed an application to rezon the tract of land containing approximately 10.1102 acres located at 6548 Nashville Road from agriculture to RS1C, single-family residential and general business, both with a development plan. And we'll have the staff report, Ms. Hart.
I want to see.
Thank you, Chair Runner. So, this property may look familiar, just wanted to point out, starting out with the development history here is that the planning commission considered a future land use map amendment application for a portion of this property with a concurrent rezoning application to rezone to highway business and RS1C back in September. And as you all may recall, if you were at that meeting, the future land use map amendment was not approved by the planning commission and as a result, no further action was taking, taken the night of the previous hearing. Tonight, the applicants have submitted a revised application, a revised proposal, there is not a future land use map amendment that is proposed with this particular application and so that is what we are here to consider this evening. The request is to rezone 1.90 acres roughly from agriculture to general business, that's the portion up front designated in the blue color on the screen. And the remaining 8.2 acres of property is proposed to be rezoned to RS1C, which is a single-family residential zone in order to develop a maximum of 27 twin homes, which would contain a total of 54 attached single-family residential units. Moving on through the staff report, the current zoning is agriculture and the current use of the property is also agriculture. The future land use designation, I apologize, there is a typo in your staff report, we left out the reference to the moderate density residential, future land use category, but I'll go ahead and read the descriptions for both of those future land use designations. The first mixed-use residential applies to mixed-use areas where taken as a whole, the primary land use is residential and a variety of housing types and densities balanced by complementary retail, office, institutional and civic uses. The distribution of land among these various activities shall be implemented through specific zoning with standards addressing the form and character of development to ensure compatibility. This designation applies to urbanized areas being redeveloped with the primary use as residential where complementary, commercial and services are provided in a contiguous area. Development standards should be tailored to emphasize an urban character and makes an intensity of development appropriate to this unique center of activity. Standalone commercial development should not exceed 10% of any contiguous area designated as mixed-use residential, no commercial footprint should exceed 10,000 square feet and compatibility should be assessed by applying the policies in LU 1.1.3 in conjunction with the general development plan. Next, moderate density residential, that was the same designation that was just considered in the last application, so I'm not going to read through that category again, but we'll note that densities in this category should range between three and a half and 13 dwelling units per acre and the proposed density for the residential portion of this development is 6.58 dwelling units per acre. Moving down to the site characteristics review section, this is the proposed site layout that's before you. Under transportation infrastructure, the property does have frontage on Nashville Road and there is a proposed internal street that would serve the, the proposed development. The applicants have also incorporated stubs, street connections as required by the subdivision regulations. Under water and wastewater adequacy, if the planning commission were to recommend approval of this application and it is ultimately approved by the legislative body, the property would be provided with adequate water and fire hydrants to meet our minimum fire protection requirements and the property would also be served by sewer if this proposal is approved. Under surrounding density, jump to the density map here, densities for existing subdivisions in the area range from 0.21 to 18.25 dwelling units per acre. Again, the proposed density for the residential portion of this development is 6.58 dwelling units per acre. Under surrounding architectural features, there is a mixture of residential, commercial and industrial properties in the area, the majority of the homes in the area are one and two-story structures. There is a one-story commercial structure and greenhouse next to the proposed development on Nashville Road. Industrial properties located closer to the southern intersection of Old Nashville Road, Loop Number Two and Nashville Road contain one and two-story structures. Next, under building materials, the surrounding homes are constructed of a mixture of brick or vinyl, nearby commercial and industrial buildings are constructed of metal and masonry material, metal buildings are prohibited for the commercial development across the street. And the applicants did identify building materials in the development plan conditions, which I'll just, I'll get to those in just a second. Moving down, section 314, which we saw in the previous application, that's the section from the zoning ordinance that outlines requirements for a traffic impact study. There was not a traffic impact study required for this development after consultation with Warren County Public Works and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. There was one condition that was recommended from the Warren County Public Works Department and that is that left and right turn lanes from the proposed development onto US 31W would be installed as part of this development. The Kentucky Transportation Cabinet did not recommend any improvements based on the plan that's before you this evening. The applicants agreed to this improvement in development plan condition number six for both portions of the development. So, moving on to the development plan conditions, first going to go through the conditions proposed for the general business portion of the development. One prohibitive uses, no part of the property shall be used as vehicle class six and above sales, vehicle, sorry, used as vehicle class six and above fuel pumps, vehicle class six and above weight scales, a bingo hall, pawn shop, tattoo parlor, light aviation, off-premise advertising sign, telecommunication, telecommunication tower, commercial parking lot or any use which would result in excessive noise or excessive vibrations beyond the confines of the property. These restrictions apply to all structures on the property and not just a primary structure. Two, structures shall be oriented toward Nashville Road. Three, no structure shall exceed two stories. Four, any sinkhole shall be either mitigated or utilized as part of the property's groundwater retention plan. Five, no structure will include exposed plain face block or split face block foundations. Six, I already referenced above in the traffic impact study requirement section. Seven, the development shall have uniformed street lighting. Eight, access to the development shall be coordinated and approved by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and Warren County Public Works Department. Nine, the developers shall preserve all mature and healthy trees not existing within building envelopes or areas of vehicular traffic or parking. Ten, facade, exterior facades of any building shall be constructed of stone, brick, hardy board or similar material, no vinyl or metal siding shall be allowed. Eleven, freestanding signs shall be a maximum of 20 feet in height and include a maximum of 50 square feet of sign face. Twelve, the development shall include a minimum of 25% open space. Thirteen, all new utilities shall be placed underground and fourteen hours of operation shall be limited to 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM, midnight. Next, the conditions for the RS1C portion of the development. Number one, all twin homes will contain a minimum of a one-car attached garage, all exteriors of all residences shall be comprised of at a minimum 80% brick, stone, ethas, hardy board or other similar material, no structure will include exposed plain face or split face block foundations. Number two, the property shall be developed with no more than 27 twin homes, again, that would include 54 attached single-family units. Next. No structure shall exceed two stories. Four, the development shall be served by internal streets. Five, any sinkhole shall be either mitigated or utilized as part of the property's groundwater retention plans. Already touched on six. Seven, the development shall have uniformed street lighting. Eight, each single-family residence shall be constructed with a minimum square footage of 1,250 square feet of living space. Nine, references tree preservation, it's the same as the condition for general business. Number 10, the development shall include a minimum of 40% open space and finally, number 11, all. And finally, number 11, all utilities, all new utilities shall be placed underground. In the focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 20 items and found 11 of those to be in compliance. Zero were out of compliance and there are nine items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. The first of those being LU 1.1.3, the planning commission should determine if this proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. LU 2 and LU 2.1, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a high-quality development that will include design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Jumping down to HN1, HN1.2 and HN1.3, the planning commission should determine if the proposal is a compatible infill development that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area and if it would strengthen the existing area. Next, HN 2.1 and HN4, the planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type and if the proposed development is believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. And finally, the planning commission should determine compliance with EV1 and if the proposed development will help to diversify the local economy. Under the staff review summary, this was not included in the staff report, but I'll just point out a few of the main differences between the previous application and the application that's before you this evening. First, no future land use map amendment was required because the proposed general business zone is in compliance with the mixed-use residential future land use category. There is a new requirement that has been incorporated with this proposal for utility placement and that is that new utilities would be located underground for the entire development. And there are now hours of operation that have been included for the commercial portion of the development. Again, that would be from 6:00 AM to midnight. With that, I'll go back to the points to consider on page one. Both the proposed RS1C and general business zones are consistent with the future land use map. The proposal does comply with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And last, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Ms. Hurt before we hear from the applicant?
Rachel, can you kind of refresh our memory into why we're not doing the changes like we did or proposed to do last time? What has changed?
The, the main change is that the, the commercial zone that is proposed up front, if I go back to the rezoning exhibit, the blue shaded area is now proposed to be rezoned to general business, which is compliant with the mixed-use future, mixed-use residential future land use category. Whereas the previous proposal included a request for highway business, which also would have required a future land use map amendment. So there's no future land use map amendment proposed with this application because the newly proposed general business zone does comply with the future land use map.
Do we have any idea what kind of commercial we're talking about?
That may be a better question for the applicant. I don't know that there is a definitive use planned at this time for the commercial parcel.
Okay. Thank you, my dear.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from commissioners before I open it up for the applicant? No questions and we'll hear from the applicant.
Madam Chairman, David Broderick. I want to make sure you can hear me well. Can you?
Yes, sir, I can.
Good. I know you all have had a long night and I thank you all for your patience without question. This is an application where I represent the property owner and the applicant and as you now know, there is no flume amendment required. It is flume compliant. We believe that as it relates to the residential property, it adds to the area, it gives single-family residences, the density is, when you hear the variances of the distancing and the density in the area, that it is very compatible at 6.5 units per acre. The two-story structures are absolutely consistent, compatible with the area. This area has developed both industrially, residentially, commercially. We have taken the signage and reduced it to a minimum. In other words, we're not using a signage that's the maximum amount of signage. We've reduced it to a smaller amount. We have increased the open space and we've agreed to have 25% open space. The products that we use to construct both commercially and residentially are of the best quality. It's going to be 80% brick, stone or hardy board. The density, as we've mentioned, is in a very reasonable range. To answer the question about the commercial development, it is general business. There has been a discussion, an ongoing discussion of whether it would be a convenience store or perhaps we've had some communications with Goodwill about them having a store there likewise. Like I say, when we go through Rachel's report, I think she has outlined fully what we have discussed. I will tell you that the development plan is more detailed than it was and we've made corrections and additions to conform to that. I do have a couple of changes to announce to you tonight. The adjoining property owner is owned by Tommy Lloyd and his mom. That's, if, if, if we're on the bottom, Tommy Lloyd's property there is on the top, he and his mother's. They have asked us to add a couple of things. Tommy was out of town when this came up before. It is my understanding that based on what we have talked with him about, and I believe his attorney, Mark Alcott, is available. Mark, are you with us?
Well. You are?
Yes, I am here.
Okay, good. I want to tell them what we would add to our development plan as we've discussed. One, in the residential, the RS1C, that all driveways would be constructed of concrete. Two, that when we were going to have uniformed street lights to begin with, they'll either be constructed of metal or fiberglass, so that would be an addition. As to the RS1C and the general business zone, we will maintain all mature and healthy trees within 10 feet of the property line adjoining the Lloyd property and no structure shall be constructed therein. Those are the additions that we had been talking with Mr. Alcott and his clients, the adjoining property owners about. Mr. Alcott have appropriately stated that.
Yes, you have, David. Thank you.
And it's my understanding Mr. Lloyd does not object based upon those amendments that we agreed to, to our development plan. Is that correct, sir?
Yes, there's no objection on behalf of Mr. Lloyd, who's co-owner with his mother, Ruth Ann Lloyd. The only other discussion that we've had today with Mr. Broderick and his client is location of the stub-street into the Lloyd property. And that's not subject of the development plan conditions. However, there's been an agreement and we've discussed that with planning zoning staff, that as you look at that stub-street is going, is making a left-hand turn into the Lloyd property. The Lloyd property borders this proposed zone change on the north side and the east side as you're looking at this property on the diagram. And so we border them on the back and so we've asked that the stub-street goes straight to the back into our property, stubbing into the property of the Lloyds. And there's a general agreement to that effect as long as it, it's in compliance with planning and zoning regulations.
And that, that, that is also correct and we agree to do that if it's acceptable with planning and zoning. Madam Chairman, with that said, and given the late hour, we believe this is a very good plan. It is compatible with how this area of Warren County has developed. It is a very nice project and it is a single-family resident development, which we believe is important and we would urge you all to pass it. We would welcome any questions. We have our engineer, Lucas Slavy, here with us and I also have the applicant, Dr. Agome here with me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Broderick. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I do, please.
Yes, ma'am.
In the development plan conditions, in the general business portion, can we restrict alcohol sales and adult books and et cetera because we're the close proximity of the school? Would the applicant be?
Well, I think at this point, adult books is a, is a given, but I do not think we want to restrict it because it may well be a convenience store, which would be also something that would be acceptable in the area. As you know, IGA has a store directly across the street from Buchanan Park, which is in the same vicinity of, of the school, which I presume you're talking about is, are you talking about South Warren or Rich Pond? Which school are you referring to?
I'm talking about all of them. We're right out there with all these schools and there's quite a concern about alcohol being available right there.
Excuse me, I, I don't think we're willing to do that at this point in time because we don't know exactly which way we're going to go on that and, and what we would be doing would not be inconsistent with what else is going on in that area of Nashville Road.
May clarify one, one item regarding adult book sales. I know it's commonly included in several lists of prohibited uses that we see, but I can let you know that the zoning ordinance would not permit that use in general business. Even if it's not a condition, it would not be permitted by the ordinance.
And Rachel, thank you. And I'm simply saying, we'll be glad to add that, knowing if there were a change in the future, we'll make this part of our development plan. That's, that's not an issue with us at all.
Thank you. Do we have any other commissioners with questions for Mr. Broderick?
Yeah, Chair Runner, this is Commissioner Starks.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Broderick or either the applicant, what is the development plan on this proposed project?
In the, what's the development? I think as it, as it goes now, it, it's probably going to be in, in some phase, as much as you've heard other things earlier, but I would say we're talking probably a two to three year or longer period of time for the complete development of all the twin homes. I think the commercial development would be a little sooner than that.
The second other question I have, item 14, under general development plan, hours of operation should be limited to 6:00 AM until 12:00 AM. Do you foresee that changing based on the proposed development of what is going in there?
Well, I, I could see, yes, sir. And here's the way I would see it, James. For a convenience store, that would be a reasonable time. If it's another type of commercial operation, and I mentioned Goodwill, they would probably have less hours than that. But at this point, that seemed to be a flexible time pattern considering the neighborhood.
Any other questions, commissioners, before I open it up to the audience?
Madam Chair Runner, this is Tim Green. I have a question for Mr. Alcott. I just want clarification here. Mr. Alcott, your client, the Lloyds that, that border this property, they now support this development, is that correct?
Yes, they actually border two of the three sides of the property and with the concessions that we have discussed and made prior to this meeting that have been announced tonight, they are in complete support.
Great. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to ask a question or make a statement?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, you're getting a little feedback. Would you state your name and address for us, please?
Yes.
Wayne and Mary Hatcher. Just a second. I had on two units, so I got shot at the other one.
Oh.
This is Wayne Hatcher and Mary Hatcher at 470 Dillard Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
And you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Yes.
And Mary?
Okay. Yes.
Swear to tell the truth.
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Yes.
Thank you and we appreciate the opportunity to speak and I know it's late, but we have some concerns and one of them was, is this a high-quality development? Is it compatible with the area? We feel like it's not with 6.2 twin homes or duplex homes and I realize you put them single-family homes, but they've got a common wall and they're on a very small amount of space, homes per acre. And if you look at the other single resident homes in the community, that is not the case. One of the things it says is that it improved the area. I don't feel it does or enhance the area. I understand that they have talked to the Lloyds and I see on the drawing that they've got a road going through, going in behind Ruth Ann's and now they have changed it and put it to the end and that's pointing it directly towards our horse barn and traffic and children and horse, horses don't mix and we own that. So we feel like it's imposing on our rights to do our business on that. And, and also you have a road into the Ray property south and I understand why Ruth Ann didn't propose to it. But we are very much proposed, opposed to changing it from a agricultural to a single-family residence as it is shown here on your drawing. And I'll let my wife speak for a minute or if anybody, she has some comments.
I just feel that we bought that land because it was zoned agricultural and I use it for agricultural purposes and with those many houses that close, that is going to increase our liability because I know from experience that children are enticed to go visit places that have horses. And I know also from experience that that increases my liability. And like I said, we're on the southern, we're very close. We don't exactly border it, but we're within 200 feet of that property line and that was, is going to increase our liability and hinder our using our property for agricultural purposes.
So we're, we're very much against this proposal as it's set forth with the density and the quality of the homes on it. And we look at it as a glorified mobile home park and y'all have got certain restrictions on putting those up in the county and I think you ought to have the same restrictions to protect the area from a twin home development of this concentration. And I appreciate very much y'all's time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Do we have anyone else? Do we have anyone else online in opposition or that would like to ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, if you'd state your name and address, please.
Ricky and Gail Woodcock, 394 Dillard Road.
And do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. You can go ahead and make your statement or ask your question.
The first question I have, and this might be for Mr. Broderick, the first paperwork we have said this would be 27 single-family resident homes or 54 twin homes, which I refer to as duplexes since they're under the same roof. What happened to the 27 homes?
No, sir, it's 27 twin homes and by that, that would be 54 single-family units, but 27 homes. There's no change.
No change, okay.
But it is not a duplex. It is a single-family resident on each side.
But they're both under the same roof.
Well, yes, sir, in part, yes, sir.
They're, they're divided by a lot line through the common wall.
The common wall.
One wall, like a duplex.
Yeah.
Two, two homes that are attached by a common wall and roof.
Right. Duplex. Right, duplex.
No, a duplex would be on one lot.
Correct. That would include.
No, sir, no, sir. These are two separate deeds. So when you go to the, when someone goes to the bank to buy one of these, they'll have their own deed.
You're splitting hairs.
Yeah. Well, no, ma'am, I'm just telling you what it is.
Okay, all right. We'll agree with that, I guess. Has there been any traffic study about the two and a half cars per unit in this nine acres that's going to come out on Nashville Road every day, other than the two turning lanes?
No, there was not a traffic impact study that was required by either the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet or Warren County Public Works Department. They did not require a study.
Okay. What about the liability of the adjacent properties? We're all agricultural around. What is this going to do with all the children, teenagers, adolescents that's wanting to run across the fences and smoke dope? And I'm not saying that.
Sir, 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 sir. Sir, sir, once again, we're not going to get into the, whatever everybody wants to talk about, the quality or lack of quality of people living in the places that are being proposed tonight. That is not something we're going to get into that discussion.
Well, my concern is if somebody crosses my fence and gets hurt, whose liability is that going to be on me?
Yeah, sir, that is not, that's not for this board. That is not a question this board will take up.
Okay. What about, what about the fire protection from the county fire department? Are we going to have enough coverage for 54 twin houses?
The minimum.
Go ahead, Rachel.
I was just going to say that our minimum fire protection requirements by our county ordinance will have to be met if this property is developed.
Okay, I'll go for that, Rachel. So what about this water pool or pond that we've got here in the right lower corner that's adjacent to my property? Is that going to flood my property like it did in this, Lloyds in the upper right-hand corner when Tad built their property?
No, it will be, it will be the requirement of this property owner, and I think they said, I don't know if their engineer is on the call or not, but they will have to contain their own water.
Lucas is here, right? Yeah, he is, yeah.
Lucas, are you on the line?
Sorry, slow on the draw there. I was couldn't find the unmute button, but yes, that's correct.
Excuse me, we'll get you sworn in. If you'd state your name and address, please.
Lucas Slavy, 1015 Chaveling, and I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. To answer your question, we will be required by law to make sure that your property does not flood.
Okay, I can go for that. What about the present wildlife in this 10 acres? Are we going to push it out into Nashville Road, or do we even care about the wildlife anymore? Is there a green space anywhere?
Well, yes, our green space is going to be at least 25% and probably more. I can't answer you the question about wildlife. I did not know. In our observations, we've seen any there. We don't have a farming operation.
Well, right now, we have wild turkey, deer, any other wildlife that you want that's back there. I mean, that's their home, so we're going to disturb it to build houses, I guess. Warren County is running out of land. I can't see building more houses. That's just my opinion.
Maybe they could put a fence.
Do we have anyone else that would like to make a comment or ask a question?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Wayne and Mary Hatcher, and we've previously been sworn. Since all of the land that we're concerned with on the south side is agricultural, is this development going to be required to build a fence between us and them?
Nope, it would sure help.
There's not a requirement in the zoning ordinance for a fence for single-family development.
Could we ask for that to be included in this zoning change?
I'll second that.
A fence, a fence and a substantial fence, not just a little stringed wire, would help with our liability.
Madam Chairman, this is David Broderick, and we had had some discussions about how practical that would be. And really, from our development point of view, it's not practical to do at this point in time.
Well, then, excuse me, but if you're not concerned with taking care of your neighbors before you build, then we are going to be opposed to your building plans.
Well, yes, ma'am, I gather that you already were, but we'll try to be good neighbors with you.
You can't be to limit the liability without a fence.
Amen, sister.
Thank you both. Do we have?
Mr. Broderick, would you consider fencing between, or your applicant consider fencing between that property and these neighbors that are so concerned?
Well, we had.
Not fence everything, but that would help.
We had talked to the Lloyds. We're going to maintain the natural tree lines, and if you recall, I made reference to that about how we're doing it. We'd certainly be glad to discuss that with them. This is the first we've heard anything about this, but this is 10 acres to fence, and I don't believe it to be practical from a development point of view or from the point of view of what the people that would be purchasing their homes there. So that's.
Excuse me, Mr. Broderick. It's not the whole 10 acres, it's the Woodcock and the Hatcher property.
Which is on, which is on the south side of your development.
And on the price of fencing.
They don't even have boundary to that.
I mean.
Excuse me, you all, we're getting a little out of order. Allow Mr. Broderick to answer the question and take a little time before we ask another. If we could, that way we can keep everything. We're having trouble hearing of who's talking and what's being said. So I apologize for that, but please, we'll try to keep it in order. Mr. Broderick, you have a question, concern?
Yes, yes, I do. They're asking me if we'll put a fence over there. And as part of the development plan tonight, we don't commit to that, we're not required to that. But we will be glad to discuss with you a way, perhaps as we have with Ms. Lloyd, to make it more pleasing on your side of the property. It's just not something that we've had any comments from you about, and we'll be glad to talk to you about this if this is approved.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else that has a question or a concern, opposition that would like to make a statement?
Mr. Broderick, is there any way to talk to your applicant to see if they would consider that tonight before we make up our minds?
Well, he's here with me, Ms. Clark, and we have been talking back and forth, and yeah, it's something, as I just mentioned, as we've done with Ms. Lloyd, it is something we'll consider in talking with them, but we do not want to make it part of the development plan tonight, nor do I think we're required to under planning and zoning rules and regulations.
Okay, I have a question. When would be a good time to meet with the owner and yourself and the Hatters?
I'll be glad to do it one day next week that's convenient to y'all. I would tell you tomorrow afternoon, but that's a little quick.
Wayne, Mary, what do y'all think?
Well, I wouldn't have a problem meeting with him whatsoever, the developer and the owner. The, I understand where he's coming from, his cost, he's got so much in the land, he's trying to make some money, and we're trying to survive as business owners and agricultural feel. And Lord only knows it's hard to do that now. And I would be glad to do it anytime this coming week it was convenient to.
Everybody.
Everybody. It doesn't matter if it's early in the morning or late in the afternoon or night.
So, Mr. Hatcher, may I suggest that you all contact Mr. Broderick's office, maybe first thing in the morning, speak with his staff about a convenient time next week. His phone number is 270-782-6700.
Thank you, folks. I look forward to talking with you.
Okay, sounds good. I just have one more thing, and I'll shut up.
Yes, sir.
I just want to ask the commissioners to look at this and vote in your heart on what you see. And that's all I've got to say until I talk to Mr. Broderick.
Thank you, sir. And I will say again what I said at the last, at the last application, we are a recommending body. It will be fiscal court that will be the one who makes the final decision. So whatever happens tonight, if you're not satisfied with, you do still have a chance to make your appeal to fiscal court or your magistrate. Anything else, commissioners? Nothing else, then I will ask for a motion, please.
A commotion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment to give with and condition upon the general development plan, 2020-50-Z. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public area, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include the summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public area.
Thank you, sir. We need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Starks?
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
No, ma'am, too many uncertainties.
Commissioner Ansel?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Chair Runner? Yes, ma'am. The motion carried with opposition, so our recommendation will be for approval. Thank you all. Do we have any other business, any discussion items?
Just, I'll mention real quick that our November 5th meeting, we were talking about a possible face-to-face to hear one item that has since been, I guess postponed or rescheduled, or they're reevaluating their options. And so the November 5th meeting will be a regular Zoom meeting. Now, it's funny that that's regular now, but that's what we got. That's all I have.
So, Ben, are we talking about doing an in-person meeting in December?
Possibly so. I've got to follow back up with the applicant's attorney and see what they have to say.
So the question I have is, are we, when we go back to in-person meetings, will we continue with a 5 o'clock start time?
We can discuss that, but generally, no, we'd probably go back to 6 o'clock. Part of the reason we stuck with 5 o'clock now is because a lot of people have to participate from work because they don't have internet, good internet at home, so we changed that to 5.
Anything else, commissioners, before we adjourn? Nothing else, meeting's adjourned, and I want to thank you all for your help this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nine.
Meeting's adjourned.